Hey, name.
From yours.
Tom.
It's me, Rob.
Okay, thank you. I will call to others and welcome everyone to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. We've got our town council meeting and ask that we rise for the public.
Let's give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mister Williams, are we in the lines with all of our play application?
We are, sir.
Obligations?
We are, yes.
Okay. Um, we have two sets of minutes in the packages and I'm not exactly sure how we're gonna do this. Uh, the October twentieth has some potential changes.
We've got a minutes to both, so we need to do.
About to both?
Yeah, we need, we need to do a motion for each first and then we'll move on to the moments.
One at a time.
Correct, yes, I guess.
So then, uh, I guess let's start with the motion to approve the October twentieth amendments as written.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, and it looks good, you can, you can.
You said it though.
Uh, any discussion, proposed amendments?
Yeah, Councilman May at the bottom of page five in the packet. Uh, this is the budget workshop, bottom of page five in the packet, per the email, the copies of, um, where he's talking about the public safety director, we're gonna add, um, we're going to add that this will be a desk position rather than a patrol position, we're gonna add a last sentence there. At his request.
There was, there was awesome. Some tweaks along in this, in this second sentence.
Yes, but the, the, the big is, is, um, end quote, but, but this position is an office job and does not have a patrol function, it's up on your screen there.
That's what I'm doing, yeah, I did. Awesome. Yeah, um, where is it going?
Bottom of page five in the packet. It's just that last sentence.
This.
Yeah.
It's thing.
Oh, okay, okay, I know. Okay, um, okay. So is, do we need a motion to that?
We do.
Um, so wanna make a motion there?
Something.
You know, seconds?
Second.
Okay, um. Any discussion of that amendment, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that's adopted, okay. Uh, any other, uh, proposed changes to the October twenty eighth, October twenty eighth amendments?
It's not a proposal, it's more of a clarification on page six, we're talking about. At the top, we're talking about compensation, so Mister Cronin stated the grades, some staff will be getting as part of the N G T study was only to bring your salary up to the minimum market tag. The clarification is, what is minimum? Or define it as fifty percent of, or the fiftieth percentile of the salary study.
I think that conversation Mister Cronin was referring to the bringing, bringing them up to the minimum range that was printed as part of that N G T study.
Well, what is the minimum? To me, we talked a lot about clarifying it during that discussion. Um, but I'm just not sure, you say the minimum, is it the minimum of the range or is it the minimum of the fiftieth percentile?
That will be a question for the administration.
Minimum of the range recommended by M G T pursuant to the study.
So if the range was one to ten, you're saying we bring them up to the minimum of one?
If that's what the study said, the range for that grade would be, okay, yes, it would be that minimum.
Okay, so Brandon, do you, do you wanna clarify that language, like bring the salary up to the? Joe, say that again, because I think you actually just said the minimum.
Um, the minimum range recommended by the consultant pursuant, pursuant to the market study.
Okay. Brandon, is that what you wanna do?
If, if that's what the intent is, but we talked a lot about bringing it to a minimum of the fiftieth percentile. So she gave her, the consultant gave her a range. And in that range, she gave the fiftieth percentile. And we discussed bringing everyone up to the fiftieth percentile. But now what I'm hearing you say was, no, it's bringing them up to the minimum of the range. If that, which would be accurate, because the fiftieth percentile is at least the minimum of the range. But it's, I thought it was the fiftieth, that's why I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, so what they did in the study is they took from up to twenty two, depending on which position somebody, some of them had near comps than others. They took the, um, the actual salary and then the ones that had ranges, published ranges. They took the median of the minimum and the median of the maximum for the published ranges. And their recommendations were based on the fiftieth percentile, which is the median, um, the middle of the, they're, they're essentially based on the middle of the minimum. So like, if you had a position that had maybe fifteen comps, they would take the fiftieth percentile of that minimum. And that's what the starting point for each position would be based on.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Okay, so are we changing the language or not?
We, we can leave the line, there's one more clarification.
All right, anything else on these amendments? Okay, so.
Believe to vote to approve as amended.
Yeah, we've, we've adopted, we've, we've.
We've adopted, Daryl's changed.
The amendment, so now we need a motion to approve as amended.
Correct.
Okay, will someone make that motion, please?
So will. To vote, we've already made that.
Already made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks anyway, Gordon. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, okay, we're done with the October, uh, twentieth minutes. Do we have anything, um, on the October twenty eighth?
Yeah, we do have a little bit more of a substantive change on the twenty eighth minutes, but we'll do it the same way.
Same way?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start with a motion to approve the October twenty eighth minutes.
So. Second.
Yeah. Uh, tell us.
So this will be on page number, so these are the twenty eighth minutes, the last council meeting. Uh, this will be on page, yeah, page nine, about a third of the way down. Uh, where Councilman May was talking to Ms. Honeycutt and Alex Oziac from the county, we're gonna basically strike that paragraph and change it, it's up on the screen, if you can read it, you've got it there, um, at your seats, Councilman May stated, the Seabrokers love trees as much as anybody, but there has to be a balance. Here's Mister Oziac and Councilman Honeycutt to drive on Bowhick Road towards Charleston in the morning when all of the construction vehicles are heading in. He said it is danger, especially when faced with the possibility of longcoming traffic crossing the summer line. He said that at some point, there must be a decision made related to trees versus the safety of people. So we're gonna replace that paragraph that.
And I, I would add only that I don't, I think that is accurate to what I said, I didn't mean for there to be the substantive change. I mean, speaking of language, other than the fact that I remember very clearly asking Mister Al we had to drive on Bowhick Road in the morning, uh, towards Charleston and not at night, I would not ask him to drive on Bowhick Road at night.
Yeah. We could riff on that for a while.
I would, he's a.
Roads and, okay, uh, so that is a motion.
Correct, we just see, I would need somebody.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second? Okay, any discussion of Daryl's? Motion, no, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, so that is approved, that the amendment is approved, any other amendments to, uh, the amendment to the twenty eighth? Yeah, okay, um, then let's vote on the motion, which is now a motion to approve the amendments as amended. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that, that's approved, okay, so we're done with the minutes, right?
We're done.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda, um, we have a presentation, um, from Michael Yomner. Uh, Michael is, uh, leading the Seabrook Island Artists Guild. Um, we have, the upcoming is Mary White Day on December, well, will be, uh, after we finish this. Um, uh, Mary Wyatt will be on the island for a, um, afternoon, right, Michael?
And evening.
And evening, um, and so Michael, why don't you talk a little bit of fifty wood about Mary's connection to Seabrook Island, um, you can step her up if you want, I think.
Um, her name is Ginnarrell, won't do everyone. But with, with her coming back, she spent twenty five years here, Mary's original story was, of course, she came down to take the take children on the beach and what we, when talking to people in the guild, um, there were two rural words that came out defining Mary and why it's become very special that we're happy to have her back on December third, uh, she's coming to the sire facility and there was open to everyone, we wanted to be outside the gate because of what she did. Uh, Seabrook Island is a community, not a resort. And Mary helped that to become divine, because Mary was really important to the way we saw that, it's not just the beauty of art around us. But she helped us to see the people that are part of our community, uh, going down Bowhick, it was not just a road to Seabrook. Instead of paying children, as we all know, she had those great connections to the Hebrew Presbyterian Church and the wonderful women there, particularly our freedom in the board. And so she helped us to see the community and brought Seabrokers in, in community with the community of John's Island. And then the next one we found that Mary does, described her issues and unite her. She was one of the very important founding people for the Seabrook Island Artists Guild. To help people that not only enjoyed art and some of the distinctions of what the medium, mediums were that the guild would work with, but also she brought those very individuals into Seabrook Island, the very neighbors of our whole community to teach them art, to teach without any cost, to help us to make a greater community. And that's why, um, you might be aware of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary next year of the country that Charleston has been designated as one of the major cities. And Mary has a special collection that she has that goes from, um, a candy maker in, uh, San Francisco all through the country over to the oyster person here in South Carolina. And the Charleston Symphony is probably having two, they sold it out, um, music based on her artwork and then she's, of course, she begins. Well, if that going on, she's written her eighth book, it's called The Life of an Artist. And it's there to help people still, how do you get through, whether you enjoy art or can do art? And we found the opportunity to have her come and visit, talk to her, do the presentation and do a book signing. And so we came together with people to make this occur. And, uh, I appeal, it is the artist skill for recognition for her, for our, our favorite daughter to come back. It's been twenty five years here, it's still a part of who we are and her effects are still being felt. So that's the appeal that I make is recognition for this great event. And I thank you for the chance to, uh, to offer that overview.
Absolutely, thanks for coming in and at the event on the third, um, I will, uh, present to, uh, Mary a proclamation of, from the town. Uh, and that proclamation, uh, declares, uh, December third, uh, Mary White Day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to what you do there. Um, okay, um, citizen comments, uh, do we have any citizen comments? Anyone on?
Just Councilman Wise.
Uh, okay, reports of the town board, commissions and committees, uh, community promotions and engagement did not meet, uh, there is no report. Uh, environment and wildlife.
We did not meet, no report.
Uh, public safety?
We didn't meet, so there's no report.
Mister Colonel, if you did meet, so the. Thought you were gonna set a record, didn't I, Eric? Five.
Uh, for the month of October. Financials. Revenue four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars versus a budget of four hundred and sixty, expenses four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars versus a budget of four oh eight. Operating income forty-six thousand dollars, which is right on target. For the full year through October, revenue four point eight five million dollars versus a budget of four point four five million dollars. Expenses four million dollars even versus a budget of four million dollars even. Leaving us with an operating income of just over eight hundred thousand dollars versus a budget of five hundred thousand dollars. So we're about where we'd expect to be from a financial point of view. Um, Seabills is connected, all paperwork is signed, um, so it's done. Pond project, uh, is nearly complete, we expect it to be substantially complete by the end of the year, remains, um, on schedule, slightly under budget. Sewer, um, usage for the month of October, average daily flow four hundred thousand gallons, maximum daily flow point seven six million gallons. Uh, water delivery was twenty-eight million gallons for the month of October, which is exactly the same as the month of October in twenty twenty-four. We delivered one point six million gallons of deep well in October.
Was that also comparable to last year?
I don't have that number, but, but probably, I mean, we expect water use to ramp down. Um, there's probably some residual rain and the golf courses, Seabrook only overseeded crooked oaks this year. Uh, and that takes more water, you can build in that ride. Um, so, about where we expect it to be.
Does the, uh, people also go to the golf course at K R E?
Yeah.
So. So the sewer with the new pond, what would be the max? We could handle, you said point seven six million was the max?
Yeah, so that's flow, that's a point seven six million gallons was the maximum flow on a single deck coming into the treatment. So the pond on the backside is a big storage capacity vehicle for all treated water. So we can probably hold, I, I'm gonna get the numbers wrong, probably fifteen million gallons, so that's thirty to fifty, twenty to thirty days worth of flow.
Okay.
Um, right, the challenge is when it rains a lot.
Sure.
There's a lot more water to deal with, um, so yeah, so that's all, on going, up and running, it's all good.
Okay, anyone else for Jim? Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the insight, by the way, about when it rains more, uh, there's shouting to be more water, I, I think we were a little lost on that.
Just trying to keep, trying to teach you all something new, I remember, maybe, right?
Didn't do that.
All right.
Um, okay, um, no report of the mayor tonight. Um, report of town administrator?
Thank you, Mayor, um, we'll start with, uh, of course, two weeks ago, we had our municipal election, so congratulations to, uh, Mayor Kleinman. Um, reelected, um, Darrell Raymond, both reelected, and then we have two of our new incoming council members, um, here with us, uh, joining us in, um, January, Pat Faulkner and Tom Hutton. Look forward to having them on board, I know Pete will probably be reaching out sometime soon to get you some orientation um, materials before you guys, um, come on board, um, so congratulations to, to all. I know we were all sitting on the edge of our seats waiting on the, the returns to come in, but, um, but, uh, the swearing in date will be, um, Tuesday, January first, uh, twelve P M. Um, not Tuesday, January sixth, twelve P M. First of all, it's gonna be. Um, and, uh, so Abby and Pete will be putting some information together for, um, the swearing in, probably start going out sometime in, um, December. Um, the only other thing I have is our, um, town hall holiday schedule. Um, with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, town hall will be closing at two P M on Wednesday, uh, the twenty-sixth of November and will be closed the entire day on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, Friday, the twenty-eighth. Um, I will be heading out of the country tomorrow, I'll be six hours ahead, so if anybody needs to reach me and I don't respond back very quickly, that's probably why, but if you need to reach, um, anybody here at, um, town hall, um, Pete will be here, Amber, um, Nicole, Tyler, um, but you may have a little bit of, of a delay if you try to reach me over the next ten days or so. Um, other than that, that's all I have, so thank you.
What, what time is swearing in?
Uh, noon, on the sixth and team.
Thanks, Jim, enjoy your trip. Um. Amber?
Yes.
Report of the finance director.
Okay, so we're reviewing the F Y twenty-five financials through the. Okay. So the general fund, uh, closed the period to a shy of two point nine million in revenue and almost one point five million in expenditures, resulting in a little over one point four million surplus. Uh, something to note, the F Y twenty-four revenues do include that transfer from the ARPA fund. Excluding this transfer, revenues are up slightly at more than, uh, reviewed in, uh, fifteen thousand. You can see the business license revenue is up and as previously noted, the elimination of the short-term rental permit fund resulted in higher planning and zoning revenue driven by that one-time permit fee. The state accommodations tax fund closed the period with just under two hundred and five thousand in revenues and just over one hundred and sixty-two thousand in expenditures, resulting in a surplus of nearly forty-three thousand. The Q three state A tax distribution was received earlier this month and it will be reflected in the November financial statements. I would like to highlight that the Q three distribution, which is typically the largest of the year, is down by just over twenty-two thousand compared to last year, so it's something to keep in mind. The town accommodations tax fund closed the period with a little over two hundred thousand in revenues and just under seventy-nine thousand in expenditures, resulting in a surplus of nearly one hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, as a side note, the Q three town A tax distribution was deposited this month, whereas last year's Q three distribution was deposited in November. The county accommodations tax fund closed the period with just over thirty-nine thousand in revenues and nearly seventy-nine thousand in expenditures, resulting in a deficit of a little over thirty-nine thousand. This does mirror the same point in the last fiscal year, uh, when the September beach patrol expenditures were reported before the next county A tax distribution was received. The Q three county A tax distribution was received today and it will be reflected in the November financial statements. The alcohol local option permit fund ended the period with revenues slightly above seven thousand and with no expenditures, uh, produced a surplus of the same amount. The short-term rental permit fund, as you know, was eliminated in F Y twenty-five, so there's no activity to report there. The, go back to the. The same goes for the ARPA or the American Recovery Plan Act that was also eliminated in F Y twenty-five as all the remaining funds were spent in F Y twenty-four. The conservation fund currently has a fund balance of a hundred thousand with no revenues or expenditures to report at this period. With the budgeted fifty thousand transfer from the general fund, the estimated year-end fund balance is projected to be approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand. The emergency fund currently has a fund balance of just over two point five million with no activity to report for the period. The road and drainage fund closed the period with, uh, one thousand two hundred and sixty-five in professional services expenditures, resulting in a current fund balance of just above one point nine million. With the budgeted transfer from the general fund of just under one point two million, the estimated year-end fund balance is projected to be a little over a three million. The town facilities fund currently has a fund balance of nearly two point four million with no activity to report for the period. With the budgeted transfer from the general fund of a little over one hundred and six thousand, the estimated year-end fund balance is projected to be approximately two point five million. The vehicle and equipment fund currently has a fund balance just over a hundred and forty-two thousand with no activity to report for the period. With the budgeted transfer from the general fund of almost forty-six thousand, the estimated year-end fund balance is slightly, is projected to be slightly more than a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So in total, the funds ended the period with a little more than three point three million in revenue against just under one point eight million in expenditures, resulting in a surplus of slightly more than one point five million and a total fund balance of just over one point seven million. This slide does exclude the inter-fund transfers and fund balance appropriations. Um, whereas this one, this slide includes the transfers made uh, in fiscal year twenty-four, such as the one from the ARPA fund. So I would say the prior slide is a better indicator of where we stand, uh, this year compared to last year. But I also wanted to add that, uh, we did have a, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer that was executed earlier this month to the local government. There any questions? Well, if you think of it, just send me an email. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at him until he asks her a question.
Yeah.
Knock down the questions.
Are you feeling, are you feeling that you've been mistreated in the past?
Just a little.
But, thank you, Amber, that was good, um. Tyler?
Thank you, Mayor Schumacher, uh, celebrated code enforcement activities since the October twenty-eighth town council meeting. Uh, ten individuals working without a town business license, uh, six, uh, instances of folks being caught working without a required town of Seabrook Island zoning permit or Charleston County building permit. Each of those cases, a stop work order was issued. Uh, on the beach, uh, four cases of a dog being off leash in a leash-required area where verbal warnings were given. Uh, trash imports from rental properties, we had four cases that were observed, twenty-four hour contact was called, reached, and removed. Then, uh, traffic hands left on the curb at the resident properties, we had five, uh, cases observed. Uh, word warning citations were issued. But in terms of planning and zoning, we've issued a total of forty-nine zoning permits since the last uh, town council meeting for which were for single-family new construction. Um, short-term rental permits, we have five hundred and nine inside the overlay, which is, uh, beneath the cap of five fifty-seven by forty-eight and then outside of the overlay, uh, we have one hundred and ten, uh, where the, the max is a hundred and ten, so there's currently zero available permits outside the short-term rental overlay. And also on the short-term rental front, I did wanna note that, uh, Beth and Mike have been working on completing short-term rental inspections for the last month or so, and that's gonna be going on through probably at least the end of January, early February. Uh, at this point, they've completed seventy-five inspections, there's another seventy-nine that are scheduled through the end of the year, so that's. the end of the year, so that's uh a hundred and eighty five inspections that we have either completed or scheduled, which would equates to a little bit under thirty percent of the uh short term rental permits that we have issued. Um, goal is to get as many done as we possibly can between now and uh February when things start picking back up a little bit. That includes my report.
Have violations uh that we cited uh through the the inspections?
Oh, it's said violations, there are corrections that are, you know, little things that have been noted that need to be corrected. Uh.
And if we've been.
Yeah.
Following up.
Yeah, like uh Beth noted today, it really that's been the most time consuming part of the process is the follow up. The inspections in terms of what they're actually looking for is relatively straightforward. Fire alarms, fire extinguisher, uh that the um short term rental placard, the updated short term rental placard is posted. Um, and so any of those items that they see that need to be corrected, they follow up with the either the owner of the property management company, give them X amount of days to correct it and then either go back out and re-inspect it or happen and send them a a photo or something demonstrating that it's been resolved.
Are you, are you able to say um what the average, I know obviously it depends on the size of the of the of the home, but the average per property time uh to do each inspection is?
Uh, ten minutes or less.
Really?
Uh, I I mean, for a larger property, I'd say around ten minutes probably. I mean, as long as you 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 have essentially a checklist of what you're looking for. They're only in the free, I mean, sometimes a fire alarm can be hidden or if it's not there, that can be a process of of elimination to find out that it's not there, but generally speaking, now they're not all that time consuming is is moist over egg. Jodding everything down, logging it and then doing any follow up that's that's required. That's the most time consuming part of it.
And the scheduling.
And and scheduling as well.
And and someone gets the short term rental permit, did they get a checklist of things that you are going to be inspecting? So they know ahead of time?
They uh believe, I believe that's included in there and.
Yeah, I know Beth has a sheet sheet like kind of like a, I guess like a front and front and back summarized version of the compare money. Sixty forty, sixty, however many pages the short term rental ordinance is. Um, I mean, you can't put everything on there because there's literally like hundreds of provisions in that ordinance, but the most important stuff and the 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 things that she's looking for when she goes out um to do the inspection. Now, I think it's even posted on.
I know, like on the, on the permit, for example, like when they uh provide us with a permit application, like one of the things that we're looking for, one of the main things, I mean, the straightforward, obvious point is you have to have your permit placard posted at the front of the house, so um that is made abundantly clear when we issue it and you need to have this posted. Um, but one of the pieces of information that they're required to give us is the location of their fire extinguisher. So while I don't know that it's explicitly stated, you have to have that. I feel like that that it's implied that you have to have it with, you know, oh. Here's.
Those items on there says what those requirements are and that they are also required to allow us to do the inspection. First of all, but that what those things are, what will we chat, this will be checked to be true. Those items are actually listed on the S R permit application as well as in the summary that they've all received. And then when I send them the request to schedule it, I actually send them the checklist that I use.
I was getting to that. Perfect.
I see uh identification of the of the emergency to our contact, one of the items that they require to have posted in a prominent place.
That's on that placard.
It's on the.
Also, the um location of the fire extinguisher is on the plaque as well.
And this year, if you remember, we had the added step, not only did they have to give us the the agent or the local contact, but they also had to submit paperwork that is sound and attested by whoever that person or company was, acknowledging that they were accepting those responsibilities and agreeing to perform those responsibilities too. So that was something that we had in the new ordinance this year.
Right. Yeah, so it it is like, there are a few circumstances where I had owners saying, you know, I don't have the most updated placard in the property and I said, well, then that's what you're trying to fire contact is for. Uh, or you need to get it in there. So, and they do.
And just to be clear, the um, the ordinance actually goes into some details, I recall about that the property can't be in a deteriorating condition and things like that, but that's not, you're you're not a building inspector, so you're you're not inspecting for the condition uh of of the build.
It is a box, I checked. Um, just general maintenance is the box that I do check into. Um, and I've had over the past two years, I've had two properties where it noted like a wobbly handrail going up the staircase outside property. Something like that, but other than that, not not noticed anything that's a maintenance type of issue that would bring any replies.
And what the ordinance provides is because we don't have building inspectors in house or engineers or anything like that. Um, the zoning administrator or any of his um designees um actually has the authority if they were to come across something. Um, whether it's by complaint or through inspection, that they felt rose to um uh a safety, let with a safety hazard, they do have the authority to bring in additional inspectors outside um engineer, service providers, things of that nature um to perform those types of inspections. Um, but I've well, we had one uh.
We had one that was the basis of that being included in the short term.
Any other questions for Beth?
Thank you, Beth.
All right, thank you. Thank you for watching the meeting.
Watching on YouTube.
Tyler, anything further?
So there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, report of communications and events manager, Abby.
Thank you. Um, coming up on Thursday, December eleventh, we have our holiday extravaganza. It will be here at town hall in four to seven. We'll have four food trucks, a dessert food truck, a beverage food truck, musician and two craft vendors. On.
Okay, December eleventh.
There it said.
Right.
Can I circle back for one second? In my haste, I neglected to um recognize an additional one of our election winners with his very convincing win, unopposed for a new six year term on the utility commission, Jim Froh. Will also be sworn in of Jim.
Whoops. Um, okay, uh ordinance for first reading, we have uh ordinance twenty twenty five, then ten. Uh, an ordinance to adopt the budget uh for the town for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty six and then in December thirty one, twenty twenty six. Um. So, yeah, um. How do we start this? Uh, do we start with a motion or do we start with any, you know, kind of questions?
So, yeah, first, a motion to get the ordinance on the tables and you can and then question. Discussion, debate and amendments.
So, uh, would someone please make a motion?
Second.
Third second, okay. Um.
So, questions, comments, uh concerns, motions?
I have a motion.
All right.
Well, I I think he's getting questions, there's comments first, so if some somebody else has questions and comments. Uh, oh wait, but at some point I have a motion.
Oh, oh, that was for the future. Well, I think you should go for it, Tara.
Okay. Anyone else? Point of clarification, we're using the expedite uh expenditure details, is that what we're placing this on? I know you set that out the other day.
Well, that's this, you're talking about this one?
Yeah, well.
That's, that's kind of what's behind.
Well. Yeah, what what goes in the ordinance is, I think those should have been attached to the ordinance, that's the actual budget. The expenditure details are the numbers that are feeding into
Okay.
The budget numbers, but I'm just wondering if some of our discussion will be on expenditure details for the final one. That's all I'm saying is because if the final one is based on these, then this is what feeds into that.
All right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the. I presume we'll be probably going back and forth between the two.
Gotcha. Uh, okay, so Tara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my amendment um is it relates to the fact that we have in uh in our budget um allocated, I believe it's a hundred and seventy thousand, although frankly I can't find where it is right now. A hundred and seventy thousand, which would be salary plus benefits, et cetera, for a um public safety officer. And um my amendment uh is to strike that line on.
Okay, um, so. What page is the, it's on the first page of the expenditure details. It's silver, it's. And it's under what, five fifty? Yeah, so under fund ten, which is general fund, um category five fifty, public safety, um we have five zero zero five salaries, gross wages. Um, I don't remember the exact number that we have plugged in um for that. Um. We have um FICA, which would be seven point six five percent of the gross wages, the medical insurance, the P B retirement. Um, so if the if the motion was to remove the public safety director, I want to say there's like one, there would be some odd and change from the gross wages plus all the um fringe benefits, health insurance, retirement um and all that. I think that's your motion to remove that from those personnel related items under public safety. Yeah, it's a hundred and seventy thousand. Well, there were, so there's other stuff in here related to that position that's not necessarily funding that position. So if that position comes out, like we do have other line items for travel and training for telecommunications for um. I'm just going by what's. I T um, yeah, so I mean, there's other things, so I would recommend if if that's the motion to not only remove the funding for that position, but all other associated funding. It's tied to that position, I think could be part of that motion. Um, we also had a recommendation, if that position was funded, that we would move our um, this could be a separate motion depending on what happens with with your with your amendment. Um, moving our um code enforcement officer from planning and zoning to public safety. If the motion is successful to remove the position and there's no director that that position would be reporting to. Um, so if that amendment is accepted, I would also recommend moving anything related to the code enforcement officer from uh public safety back under planning zoning, which is where it sounds currently. I'm just reading big salary, that's all.
With the budget packet, we're at the bottom of page thirty one, if you're.
Yeah, if you're looking at the one seventy number, that's going to include the public safety director and the code enforcement officer. So what's the one sixty? I don't know what.
At the one that he sent out separately, there's a number on there.
That's the base salaries for all positions under public safety, which is the public safety director and the code enforcement officer.
Gotcha.
So if you cut all of that, you're cutting not only the public safety director, you would also be eliminating the code enforcement officer. So I think if if the intent is just to remove the public safety director, you can make that in the form of a motion. It's, I think the base was right around ninety six, three hundred and change. Um, and then you have all the fringe benefits on top of that, which bring it up to about one thirty plus or minus. Um. So I think that would be the.
Yeah, so if I, it could be clear that my amendment would be to um strike the um um proposed new position.
Yes.
Not the code enforcement officer and all associated expenses with the new proposed position.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
I think so, but I got a little confused with the discussions.
Okay, all right, so there's a a motion uh to uh not fund the position of public safety director, so to remove from the fund it all. The all the the funds uh associated with that. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Um, okay, so discussion.
So, you know, Mr. Mayor can lead off the discussion for sure. So, uh, I stated the reasons for this back in the budget workshop, which is uh recorded and available on YouTube, so I'm actually not going to repeat those reasons. Um, uh, but I just wanted to add uh today, one additional data point that I that is meaningful to me and that is, and that has been meaningful to council on other occasions, and that is what do our peer communities do? And um we looked at that, for example, with respect to terms uh to term limits uh and uh we looked uh or or in the process of looking at that um for our compensation for our uh town staff, what do our peer communities do? And in that regard, the cases are sort of laid out in our consultant's report with as to the new public safety director, the proposed new public safety director. So what our consultant did was look at the uh peer communities and determine uh what what would be comparable salary for this position, but when you actually look at that, um that report, which is on page forty eight of the report, um I I examined it more closely and there are a total of twenty one communities apart from Seabrook that are identified. Ten of those actually have police departments and the public safety officer identified is is the police chief. Um, one of those ten actually, Bald Head Island, is the police and fire chief. But you get the point, there's uh there's a police department um and and this position is sort of what you would expect, which is um they, it's called here the public safety director, but um they're they're police chiefs and that's identified in this report in the title and position uh comments. Um, in term, the the others, uh nine others are either not applicable, they're they're blank. Uh, so they're N A, they're blank, or uh they expressly state Isle Palms does not have position, Home Beach Florida does not have position and the um uh and and a few others identify the position as the sheriff, but of course, that's not. We already have the sheriff providing uh public safety here, that's not a municipal position. Um, that's that's simply saying that the county sheriff is a elected official and his department or her department are the one providing that. So that leaves us with two communities um out of the twenty one that that do what we're proposing and one of those, um one of those is the town of Kiowa and we look to Kiowa from time to time to think about ideas of what we may want to do. Many times those are rejected, as happened during the short term rental process, we looked at things but rejected a lot of them. Um, some of the times they're accepted, but I would submit that when it comes to spending, um we not use Kiowa as a peer organization. Um, because if you do, if you look into sort of Kiowa, um, they actually have so much money, they don't know what to do with it and that's actually not a cliche, I think it's literally true. Um, they have an unassigned fund balance of twenty seven million dollars. Um, thirty three million in cash assets and their work chart um shows a total of twenty eight full time employees. So I don't think that we're um uh for this purpose of of having this new position comparable. And then the the remaining um uh town is Fort Myers Beach, Florida, which um it's, I went on their website and it's very not informative, it doesn't tell you what. Uh, town is Fort Myers Beach, Florida, which um it's, I went on their website and it's very not informative, it doesn't tell you what. Uh, who's who in the town in terms of staff and what functions they perform. Um, so taking taking the word of this report that they have somebody. Um, uh, an emergency services director that is comparable, then um. Uh, it's just benefit of the doubt, accepting that that is a comparable position from this um peer. Then that's, well, that is one, but it's one out of twenty one. And 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 in light of what we've done in the past, which I totally approve of, I think that. Um, while we, our slogan is make Seabrook uniquely yours, that doesn't mean that we have to be sort of unique in in terms of. Our policies and and um I think that just what. We, the experience from the peer communities, um is is another indicator that this is a position that. In an ideal world, which if you define ideal as having more money than you know what to do with. Um, then, yeah, we could have this position, but we're not in that position. I uh I I am not against using the money, what I'm, what I'd like to do is. Put the money into the reserve fund for the road or whatever, so that we can, it's like practical. Um, down-to-earth things to actually uh. Use that money for resilience, which which certainly the road, which I believe. It is nice to have the three million dollars that was spoken about, but I'm not sure we're gonna be able to do it for three million unless you use that money for. For that, so for those reasons and the ones that I said at the budget meeting, um, I respectfully uh. Suggest that we not uh go forward with this position.
Uh, anything else?
Well, again, I mean, I don't want. I don't really need that, no, as I said at the last meeting. Um, this is something that administration has said that would be needed. Here, based upon all of the um public safety uh. Obligations that we have and the activities that are done. Um, and I'm not gonna sit back because I'm not here on a daily basis. And say that Joe won't make that assessment. Um, I have to trust in what he says, um more so than um. Yeah. If that's what he's saying, I I don't see anything of why I would doubt that. And here's another thing, um this morning we had a a little um presentation. Um, concerning the software, Co-Grid type of software from Everbridge, and it's a similar emergency management. Software, um. What was really impressive about the software is all of the capabilities that it would have, and I would think as a public safety. Uh, arm and software package that the director would be uh. Responsible for this, uh getting out, you know, code red, you know, thunderstorms and, you know. But flash flooding things and all sorts of, the capabilities was unbelievable. But what happens is when you start using and and utilizing software and different. Uh, communication vehicles, you need people to do those things. And I don't see, and as I said this morning to Abby and Joe, I said, if you implement this thing. There's a lot of work that's gonna be done by these two people. To get it to a point where you're not just using it superficially, but using it to its capabilities. So that's just one example of um where, you know, that could be used for that position, and also. For the forty years that I've been on here, I've often said that. Moving the beach patrol to um, just use it, to the public safety realm. Was a uh was an important thing, so that is something that um. Uh, when we say that it's an office job, um, I think that the, you know, uh. A public safety director can get out on the beach once in a while and talk to the beach control and find out what's going on and. Things that are needed or whatever to help make sure our beach is continues to be safe. Over a period of time, so I think there's plenty for this person to do. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Dan. How many years have you been chair?
Four.
Public safety?
Four.
Four years, so that, thank you for your service on that. And have I told you recently, we're gonna miss you?
Well, thank you, I appreciate those kind words.
Gordon, you have anything you want to uh throw into the mix on this, since we've heard from everybody except him?
I don't support it. I support the get rid of it.
That's it?
Yeah, that's about it. I think if the the town should have come out with a document that outlined what this person is supposed to do, what it. The whole bloody thing, all we got was something in the budget. So now, I I will vote for anything that says, don't do it.
In my position, I haven't spoke, but I agree with what Daryl said, but the main thing for me was, we're adding a brand new position. When, you know, in face of these two major projects that we've got coming up. And you got the roadwork, you got the building, um we've got a lot of money set aside, but. Hopefully, I'll be pleasantly surprised, and that's enough money that will cover all this, but that would be a. And my guess, that would be a huge surprise for me, um so I don't think we should start allocating more. To new positions until we get these things, at least moving along and figure out. How we're going to pay for these things, and then maybe in the future, depending on circumstances. We could come back and revisit the position, and the other thing too is, we talked about public safety. You know, Daryl mentioned, you know, police forces and so and so forth, well, Supola controls our security behind the gate. So is this person gonna be working directly with Supola, will they be overseeing security, will we take? That whole thing over and maybe the town do security, if you came up with a pro proposal such as that, and you've worked with Supola. And get them to agree to it, then that position, in my opinion. And and would be full more more fully utilized than what I've heard so far, I I don't, I don't think this is a full-time position. As Dan thinks it would be, um, I I tend to have a different opinion on that.
Well, just one thing to clarify the Supola town position, security. Behind the gate of Supola is only there to enforce Supola rules and regulations. It doesn't enforce any of our ordinances, it has no power to do that, and and so on, to um. You know, overlap, I would say they would work cooperatively with them, uh but as you know, we've worked. Hard over the past couple of years, and Supola agreed to this, is to get the county sheriff behind the gate. And Supola did that, and they can enforce more of the quote-unquote public safety. You know, rules that you would think of, the laws and, you know, uh, yeah, you know, burglaries and. All those kind of things that are real public safety issues in the real world, not behind the gate where security. I mean, security again is there only for Supola rules and rights.
I I agree with that, and and but I want to add that. Kiowa, again, um actually does have a large contingent of off-duty sheriffs, deputies. Um, under the direction of their director of public safety, who can enforce those things, so doing the sorts of things that. Dan is talking about, um, and. And uh I just read it uh today when I was reviewing for this, uh I think they're um. Uh, sheriffs, off-duty sheriffs deputies are on duty from uh like um. Five at the end of six AM or something, so basically overnight they're there, but when we considered having an ordinance. Uh, and a noise ordinance in the town, one of the reasons, um, that e- e- even though we heard. Quite a few citizen comments that it would be a good thing to have, one of the reasons that we didn't adopt it, and I was uh certainly agreed with that. Is when it was pointed out that the very hours of the noise ordinance are the very hours we have zero coverage. Uh, in the town to enforce the noise ordinance, Kiowa, by contrast, uh has off-duty sheriffs off uh duties who can do that. So if this, so if this money were being used for that purpose, the hiring of off-duty sheriffs. That, that again, that might be a good use, um, and I think it would be good to look into that, but I just. But that's not what we're talking about here.
I thought at one point we did have some funds set aside for hiring. Mostly in the summer and on weekends. Uh, off duty, my room, so it was one of the ones that we put on there for considered but not included. So we had an estimate of what that would be, but.
See, I don't remember.
Six weeks ago, so therefore, yeah.
It's too long.
Too long to remember, exactly, but I do remember that, so. Maybe we should do, instead of just consider it, say, that's something that we should do, and then. That person, because I think, you know, part of um. Our um use of county sheriffs, well, that's all fine and 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 so on. I'd say there are certain times of the year where it's needed a lot more, you know, high season, let's say. Summer, you know, just what the proposal had said, uh, weekends during um. May, June, July, August, somewhere in that ballpark.
Um, yeah, I'm. Not going to uh repeat what I've already said on this, I think it is a position, however. Um, that uh we won't regret, um. Not funded until. A storm happens, and then uh we'll regret it. Um, I think that uh we're overlooking. The professional knowledge uh and experience that someone who would be hired to fill this position have. Um. At at a much higher level than what any of us has, so um. As long as uh we continue uh to avoid um. Big storms, um it'll be fine, uh but like I said, I think that. Uh, maybe if if our luck runs out, uh we're gonna regret this, um. The good news, though, is that Daryl has confirmed that when next year the county. Uh, calls for a representative uh to be uh. Resident at the Emergency Operations Center in North Charleston. Daryl will be representing uh the town, um superbound with all of the other. Um. Public safety directors.
I wish there were one.
Hmm, we'll see. Uh, and and police chiefs.
Well, okay, so we'll let's get a police department.
And Daryl, uh county employees have a lot of pets.
Oh, what?
A lot of pets. Oh, but I did forget to tell you, ice cream is included.
Okay.
You'll be sleeping with Miss Gomerson's cat. Okay, so let's uh.
I I do, I, my final comment is simply.
You need to.
This is not, uh, my position is not based on the wishful something that we will never get hit from the storm. I'm not saying that we will not get hit with a storm, the odds are that. One of these years, we will be getting hit with a storm, but it's based on whether having this position. Uh, is going to um materially mitigate the damage, et cetera, uh from the storm.
Okay, which I believe, obviously, which I believe that it does, uh, Joe, you have anything you want to add before we vote? Uh, okay, alright, um, no other comments? So this is a vote on. Daryl's motion to strike from the budget. Uh, funding for the public uh safety director and whatever other costs. Uh, go into that calculation, uh in addition to uh just the wages, right? That's the motion?
Can can I ask one clarification, um this would. Put our budget out of balance, I hear you said at one point you would like to. Take any savings from not funding the position and put it towards the road project. So is that included as part of your motion in order to balance the budget to? Cause we're already basically at our fund balance max policy, so we can't just have it sit in the general fund. Um, so we would either need to transfer it out to another fund, or what we've done with several hundred thousand this year is. Right now, it's just being parked in contingency, so it's not being set aside for any specific item. Uh, but this is probably eliminating the position, all the associated costs, I would guess we're probably somewhere in the one fifty. Plus or minus range, to keep our budget in balance, we need to move that money somewhere. So is there a recommendation of?
I I, that's what I would be happy with, and if it needs to be part of the motion, um. And we haven't discussed that uh to get on reviews, but I I would be happy to do that, uh if that's appropriate procedurally.
So what if we don't, what if, what, yeah, it's an interim nap? And um we had voted, um and didn't have plan part B. Um, what would we have done, we would have put it to contingency, or we would have been out of. We would have been out of.
Yeah, I mean, as second rating, we would have had the exact numbers, and we'd come back and say, in order to bring our. Budget back into balance, you need to find a home.
I think, that's what I think we should do, I think we should know what the exact number is, um and then work back from that.
The only problem is we have to advertise a budget public hearing, so we need to have a number, um. I might have to put it somewhere just for now.
When is, what is our, uh, when is, when is uh second rated? Is that what?
I think it's the eighteen.
One of the victims.
Yeah.
So we're probably gonna send out the public hearing yet.
Right, so to gradually get in the club, I mean. It's, alright, so I'm gonna suggest that we put it into contingency then, but kind of know what the number is. So we can advertise based on the budget with it in contingency. But tee it up so that we remember to actually look at that number uh at second rate, you think that's crazy?
I mean, just as a placeholder.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I'd receive to that, uh.
Contingency.
Propose.
Good, yeah, that's amazing.
So then that's, so that's. The motion, does the motion need to be amended, or is that it?
No, as long as.
Alright, so all in favor of the motion, whatever it might be at this point, um say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. I'm hope to oppose, okay, um.
I'm gonna vote for it, I'm gonna vote, yeah, um. Okay, so that passes, um.
As a, as a companion to that, I would suggest, um since there are now no longer. A director for the code enforcement officer to report to, that any costs related to the code enforcement officer. Being moved from public safety to another department, uh has been for the last several years under planning and setting.
Does that need an amendment? Is that, and is that the best place for it, in your view? I was wondering if Amber, if Amber wanted to uh have.
Uh, I I'll make a motion to amend based on the gentleman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh that passes, um Joe. Are there any, any other? Um. Places where, um. Eliminating the position, um, requires, uh, adjustment? Or is it something we need to look at, uh, while you're doing it now to see what it affects?
Well, adjustment in budget?
Yeah.
Um, I have to go through the entire thing. I mean, obviously we know. Anything that's within that department, um, related to that position, um. The salary, the benefits, uh, there'll also be IT, there may be some other stuff.
There may be other levels, yeah.
That I may have to look at and reduce, um. The, probably the only other glaring type one is, is we have, um. In the, um, public safety budget, um. Thirty thousand to do our, um, comprehensive emergency plan, um, rewrite. Um, that's a, a major undertaking, um. To assign that to a member of our staff, um. I, I have talked briefly with one about the possibility of kind of. Filling in if we didn't have a public safety director, um. Not necessarily, emergency management, not necessarily within their wheelhouse of expertise. But they felt comfortable that they could step in and help fulfill that role. Um, so I would at the very least, probably recommend keeping that in the budget for now, um, and, um.
Why don't we just contract services?
Well, we do contract service, but, I mean, this has been a, a longstanding effort of the town to. I mean, when I got here, it was been with three employees today.
No, I.
And there's, there's been a, a multi-year effort to professionalize our staff and have people take on. Certain functions that here before, like, members of council volunteered to perform, um. And so this was kind of like the last step in that. The public safety was really the, the last one that we didn't have a designated person to, to take on, um. That's really why we recommended putting the position in the budget was to take on and oversee the CEP. A full comprehensive rewrite, um, it's not to say we can't do it, um.
My point is this, though, why would we? Uh, burden somebody else in the staff that's already. Burdened with other tasks and so on. Why don't we, if we're not gonna have a public safety director to oversee the rewrite. Contract services for somebody to help us write the comprehensive emergency plan. And not have somebody else do, that's all, do it as a contracted service.
No, we would definitely be depending on a consultant to do a lot of it, um. Having a consultant doesn't mean that there's no staff involvement, oversight, participation. Especially as our staff is moving into performing the functions in the CEP, um. So there will definitely need to be a lot of staff coordination. It's not just gonna be a consultant. You know, doing what they do and then bringing us a final work product, you know, six or twelve.
No, I mean, Dan, Dan, look at, look at on the budget, look at line, uh, ten, five fifty, six.
Now, I'm just reacting, that's what that is. But I'm reacting to Joe's comment was that. He said that somebody on the staff would have to oversee this thing, and my feeling was that. That's what you can hire contracted services to oversee that. Bring it back to the staff for their input, bring it back to the public safety committee for their input and so on. In other words. We keep saying that we need the position because staff is burdened with tasks that. Other, the public safety director should. Be doing, so therefore, now that we're not gonna have that, and that's fine. But then. The CEP part, not the others, is that, um. The consultant could do all of that stuff instead of the staff, that's all I'm saying. When you're saying that's not possible.
Well, I'm not saying it's not possible, I'm saying that. A consultant is not just gonna be off in their own world without interacting.
No.
And engaging with and coordinating with somebody who we need to designate who knows our operations inside and out.
The two.
Yes, in my free time, um, but.
Then Pete.
It's, um. So, and I don't wanna go back and, you know, belabor that whole discussion, so I mean, ultimately it boils down to. It's either something we just don't do this year, or you need to either tag-team it or assign it to someone.
Right.
But those are really two.
Right, and one way or another, that will get determined as time goes on, uh, but not today and not here.
I won't have time, I'll be out clicking cars and MSVs.
Appreciate how much I've been helping.
Well, that's.
And if you, and if you're not, if you're not, if you want to give me your data, don't.
Right.
Don't move from me.
Actually, Dan's gonna have a lot of free time.
Yeah, I was wondering if Dan was volunteering.
Dan, I'm surprised you haven't asked about the traffic counter. Uh, wires across Seabrook Island Road.
I haven't seen them, so, when did they put them up?
On Seabrook Island Road, Bo Hickett Road, in about five or eight places. I drove over them this morning.
I think those are DOT, I know they do it.
Yeah, they have Seabrook Island Road every year.
Okay, um, any other?
Why did it listen up?
Any other questions, comments?
Just a, um, for the software. Cause I don't know what it's for, what is Pacer AI for?
So Pacer AI is one that we started this year, um. It's a. It's an analytics, um, tool that basically takes and aggregates. Um, user cellphone data, um, and you can use that. So we've been using it a lot as we're trying to put together what we wanna do for our new beach patrol contract. Um, we've been going in and pulling, and their data goes back to twenty eighteen, so even before we worked with them. Uh, we can go back and pull all their data. They have anonymized cellphone data. Um, from like tens of millions of customers across the country, and. Um, you can use that to see like. How many people are on the beach on a given day, you know, times of the year, times of the day, days of the week. So it's really, they call it a location intelligence tool. Um, so that's what we've been using it for, um, primarily right now is, um. Coming up with our plans for the beach patrol contract renewal, to see if we wanna make any changes to. The days, the season, um, times of day, things of that nature. Just based on how many people, nobody has ever really known how many people are on the beach at any given point in time. Uh, we've also been using it to look at things, um, like tourism, um, impact, um. We were using it, um, with some of the ATAX requests that came in this year. Um, cause not only can you get the data, but you can also see like where people are coming from. So if we're funding an event, we can say, okay, if the event takes place this week, um, you can go in and see. At that location, how many people that week came from a location more than fifty miles away. And you can see if it's having an actual tourism impact. Um, so it's better than like what we've had in prior, prior years, which is basically like. Well, Harris Teeter looks more busy this fourth of July than it did last fourth of July, so there must be more people here this year. It's, um, it's a much, much more sophisticated way of getting some of that population and location.
Yeah, we, that's the other reminder, I forgot what that was for. Um, the next one, S T R compliance software for thirty thousand, looks like we're. Wanting to add it this year, what benefits do we get out of that software?
We actually added it, um, already for this year, so this could be carrying it into next year. Um, we had a program called host compliance for the last several years. It was a very basic program. Um, basically all it would do is it would, um, scrape listings and tell you, um, you know, basically here's all the listings. Um, what the one we have now is called Deckard Technologies. Um, not only can it get all the listings, link all the listings, it can give you information about. You know, how many nights per year that property is occupied, it can give you rate information. Which we can use to cross-reference against business license information, um, it can actually scrape the content of the ads. So for example, if we say in our ordinance, you have to have the, um, permit number of every short-term rental. Um, in the content of each ad, that system will actually go out, scan every ad. And it'll be looking for a, a number that's gonna start with, you know, whatever, with X many digits. And it'll flag the ones that don't have it in the content of the ad. Uh, it'll tell you if they're advertising over occupied, it's just a much more.
Okay.
Robust system than we've had in the past.
Perfect, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Okay, uh, then. We. There's a motion pending, right?
Yeah, at this point, you would do first reading as amended, the amendments being removing the. Um, public safety director and all associated costs. The savings going to contingency and then moving costs associated with the code enforcement officer. From public safety to the planning and zoning, um, department, um, and then. Um, unless there were any amendments, it would be approving this budget with those.
Um, so that, that is the motion that's pending now. Okay, um, if no one has anything further, then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes the first rated. Let's, yeah, let's just drive around, then second rated, we'll, we'll, I have isolated those costs that we've moved. To.
Well, the contingency is gonna be such a large amount, it's gonna still.
Yeah, but the exact amount. I know we're.
We'll have that.
Um, alright, um. Citizen comments, I guess the answer is still the same. Uh, um. Council comments?
And we, just one, just for clarification, cause it could have impacted contingency, um. Joe. You confirm or explain, we've got these different funds, you've got building, you've got road, you've got general. And to my understanding, these are all unrestricted funds. So if we were to put money into the road or is success for this director or whatever, this contingency, we put it to the road. Or to the building, but we found out, you know what, we put too much in for the road. How easy is it for us as council? To be able to move it from the road to the building or to some other unrestricted fund, or even to a restricted fund?
Uh, it's very easy to an unrestricted fund, um. Basically, we would just be doing a budget amendment, um, we would be moving it from one fund to another fund, um. For restricted, um. And that, as, as we're looking, the, the project that I think is on the immediate horizon is the road project. Sure, uh, we do have some fairly sizable balances in our, um, primarily the state ATAX fund, which is a restricted fund. One of the reasons why I wanted the place for AI program that I forgot to mention is when we can look at the, um, the tourism data. Um, like, how many people are actually using Seabrook Island Road? Um, if we can get some sort of quantifiable number that we can tie to tourism. That actually opens up that you can use some of that ATAX money that's sitting in the fund balance to put towards that project, um. So, um, we are working with our engineer trying to get an updated cost estimate. Uh, we won't have a firm number, obviously, until we go out for bid and we get, um, quotes from hopefully several contractors. Um, but yeah, moving money, um, whether it's restricted, unrestricted, it's, it's gonna be by a budget amendment. Um, it's very easy to move from one unrestricted fund, um, so like if you wanted to take from. The general fund fund balance and put it into the road and drainage, those are all unrestricted funds, there's no external restrictions on how you use those. Or if we have money in road and drainage, or like, eh, eh, we wanna use that towards facilities instead, it's just a simple budget amendment, um. You can still do the same thing, it's the same process if you're moving in and out of restricted. More so out of restricted funds, um, but you do just have to document, um, that it is a. Like for any tax, that it is a tourism-related expenditure, um, but, I mean, the process is basically.
Thank you.
And, and it, it's the same as we've done before.
Yeah.
Uh, when we have moved, uh, money during the year, uh, from one fund to another, um. But exactly what Joe said, but they're for budget amendment.
Uh, we, we typically do all those, we budget them, um, you know, when the budget's adopted. But we typically don't do them until the end of the year, so I was actually talking with Amber earlier, we'll probably in December be doing all those. And we're not, like, no money's actually like moving, it's all just sitting in the local government fund. It's just you're, you're taking the name off of one fund and saying this is actually in this fund instead. Uh, but it's something that, um, Amber and our accountant would be doing on the backend.
Into affection, affectionate those transfers. The reason for the question and then the whole point of it. Maybe we consider for the next meeting, why do we even have a contingency? Why can't we just earmark it for the road drainage? And at the end of the day, if we don't need it for road and drainage. As you just explained, it's just a vote by council to move it to another fund.
Yeah, I think it's always good to have a contingency just for things like emergency things that may come up over the course of years. Um, our, historically, our contingency has been around thirty to fifty thousand dollars, um. As of, well, I'm gonna have to update it after the amendments today, but the contingency as of right now is like over four hundred thousand, like four hundred and fifty or some odd thousand. So it's much higher than it typically is. Um, the intent was, it was basically just parked there for right now. Once we have some better understanding of, um, the cost for the road project, the timeline for the permit, um. That, that would be a consideration, um, for council to make a determination, is that something we wanna fund? Um, in next year's budget, do a budget amendment, move the funds in place, go out for bid, um. Or, cause I know there's other projects, more expensive projects that are probably gonna be sitting out there too. Um, you know, is that something you wanna try to put some sort of package together and look at how you wanna fund multiple projects? Um, that's more of a, a policy decision, um, for council to make. Um, it seemed a little premature to do it right now, so it's just parked in contingency and then, um. You know, once some of those other things become more clear, then we'd be asking council to make some decisions, how you wanna fund. Certain projects, which may mean moving some of that money out of contingency to some of the other funds.
This is, is this a council comment?
Yeah.
Uh, so I just wanted to report it, um. Uh, follow-up on something that was discussed briefly a few months ago. The, the entities, the club, the Sapoa and the town are continuing to work, um, on cell coverage on Seabrook. Um, from the town's perspective. We can't do anything other than go through the statute clearly, uh, mandated, uh, processes of public hearing and. And, uh, zoning, uh, procedures. But, um, we do have a sense, since my representative, this representative Seabrook on that committee. That, um, that cell coverage on the southern part of the island is lacking, and, um, and the data back that up. Um. First of all, there's, I mean, the amount of cell data that's sold to these companies to be able to. Have the software that we're buying. Is, um, uh, interesting, but, but you can imagine that it's not hard for, um, these companies to know. What's, uh, where coverage is good and bad, and it's bad on the southern part of the island, so without. Uh, doing anything other than, um. Uh, uh, that, that would go beyond what, what, what we're able to do without, uh, going through formal procedures. Um, the town is, is trying to, to work with Sapoa and the club. Um, uh, to, to fix that, to improve that.
Good, so, and the process goes on.
And the process goes on.
Alright, um. Motion to adjourn.
Someone?
We're adjourned.